Recording in progress.
Everybody, we will call to order today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like for everybody to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On that cue, if you have any cell phones, we'd actually turn them off or put them on vibrate. For the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of the legislative chambers. And also in the back, if for some reason needed, there's an automatic defibrillator in the black of the room. With that, I'd like to call to order the Board of Equalization Meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Item B is call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 26th, 2021's date on a hearing on certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll go to item C on the Board of Equalization's agenda, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for any citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related matters that may not be included on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to resolutions D, E, and F. What's the will of the Board? Is there a motion? Motion by Morgan to approve items D, E, and F. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll go to protest, item G, a protest of the personal property penalty for Intax for Omni Engineering. Mr. Goodwill?
Yes, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. This is a request to waive late filing personal property penalties. It has been filed by an outfit called Intax, which is a national tax rep firm on behalf of their client Omni Engineering. This is not a mom-and-pop business or somebody that struggles with paperwork. Let me tell you about, a little about Intax. Intax is a national tax rep firm that holds itself out as an expert on state and local taxation nationwide. In their materials, they claim absolute precision, absolute results. Intax is the solution to your property tax needs. If you look at their protest, they alleged neither of the two things that provide grounds to waive a personal property penalty. They did not allege that the penalty was wrongly imposed, and they did not allege that it was incorrectly calculated. In fact, they say, "Well, we just missed the deadline, but we would like you to waive the penalty because," and I think this is kind of rich too, "it would be a hardship to the client." Well, yes, they're holding, they're using the client as a hostage to try and waive the penalty. What I think the outcome of this is likely to be is when the client gets their bill in December with a nice big penalty on it, the client's going to pick up the phone called Intax and say, "Hey, you know, how about you pony up for this penalty? Because it's your responsibility." I guess what I'm trying to tell you is by state law, they haven't alleged any reason to waive this penalty. And if there's anybody that has, that should know enough to file on time, it's these guys. So we would ask that you dismiss the protest.
What's the will of the Board?
Is there anyone here?
No, I did not see anyone here. Okay.
I move to follow the assessor's request.
Motion by Morgan to approve item G. Is there a second? Second by Boyle. Again, are there any questions, comments?
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify, if I approve item G, you mean basically uphold the assessor's recommendation?
Exactly.
Okay.
Again, the motion, and to make sure, for the motion is a second, does that include the German?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll move on to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here. Item one is medicine claims. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Friend. Seeing no questions, please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item two is consent agenda. There's 12 items on the consent agenda. Is there, is there a request to move anything from the consent agenda?
Item C six.
Okay. Anything else?
Questions on item D?
Alrighty, we'll do that in the approval process. If there's not a request to move anything, I'd ask for a motion to approve items A to bail with the, with the, not removal, but removal for now of approval of item C six. Does the clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Boyle?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Questions on your items?
Yes, on item D, and I see Mr. Leahy's here, just for the record, so that we can let folks know what we're doing here. This is approval of a lease modification to 1500 North 24th Street for Health and Human Services for five years. And it's at $3,986 a month. I think this is pretty straightforward, Mr. Leahy, but just so that the viewing audience could understand what we're doing here, could you tell us what this does?
Morgan Commissioners, Jerry Leahy, Public Property. Yeah, this is the, this is an HHS lease on their behalf for the North Omaha community. And this really does not expire until January, but there was an opportunity that came up. And I made the decision, and I talked to the state, to probably go ahead and extend this based on the facts that it's much needed in the North Omaha community. To my understanding, it's the largest walk-in client activity in the state of Nebraska. And this is probably the last extension at this location. We had a previous location at 24th and California, and we got bounced by Creighton University on that one. But we were able to locate very closely to that location on 24th and Hamilton, which is this location. So again, this is one of those that's required by the state statute for the county to locate the HHS office, and that's, that's what it is.
Right. So when was the move from 24th and California to 24th and, is it Hamilton?
12 years ago, I believe.
Okay. And since then, have we had a series of five-year leases at this property?
Have we had what?
A series of five-year leases at this?
No, no.
The previous leases, what was the duration of those leases?
We've had, this is, this is the second.
I'm sorry?
This would be the second.
This is the second?
And this will be the last, at that location.
So what happens after this lease expires?
Well, I'll have to, or someone will have to research the area. And, you know, the convenience of this location for the clients that use this facility is tremendous. I mean, it's, you know, there's a lot of locations north, but do they really fit the needs of the people that need to get there and the transportation to get there? So that's why it's so important to extend this and, and the state agree. And again, we have to provide it, so we really don't have a choice.
Sure. And this term of the lease goes from monthly payment from February 22 to January 23 of $3,986.52 to a cap off in February 1st, 26 to January 31st, 26 of $4,315.14. That's an increase of $15.83 a square foot on the front end.
One minute.
$17.13 square foot on the back end.
That, that last year would be, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You had other questions? Commissioner, are you done?
I don't.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No, that's it.
Alrighty, with that?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Boyle?
So just, just to clarify a couple things, this is something that the state mandates that we pay for? Is that what this is? It's an HHS office?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I think just to make that point, it's just another one of those mandates that comes out of the county budget?
Yes.
Yeah, alright. And then as far as this, why, why is it up for approval for a lease modification? What's, what's the modification that's happening? Like what's, it's an approval of a lease modification. What's the modification, just that we're doing it for five years?
Modification, extension, it's, there's, as Commissioner Morgan would know, there's different, there's different verbiage used to amend or modify. In this case, it's a modification of, of the lease.
And it's for?
The term is, is five years, so.
Okay, so it's just?
I guess the verbiage could have gone either way.
So we're just modifying the, not the, not the rental amount, but just the term of the lease?
The extension, right.
The extension, okay. Okay. Alright, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Again, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We'll go back to item C six, engineering agreement with Feldberg, Holt, and Ulevig for professional engineering service on the county project C dash 28 on Q Street from 192nd Street to 204th Street. Commissioner Boyle, you had a question?
Yep, so my question really had to do with the fact that it says it's not budgeted. And I, I believe the engineer's office comes to us and has a budget for major projects being done. Is this something unexpected or unforeseen? Does anyone know? Okay.
Is it, is a, can I, is it money coming, are we to pass through?
Somebody from the highway department's going to have to answer those questions.
Okay.
Are you comfortable?
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item C six?
I was so moved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Friend. Seeing no questions, are you ready, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item three, recognition and proclamations. First item is, item A is recognition of the following county employees who have retired. Ms. Donna Reese, who's worked for the Douglas County Clerk's Office, who's the Douglas County Clerk of the District Courts for 20 years. I don't see anybody from the office, and she's not here. We'd like to wish her well in her retirement and thank her for her service. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second? Motion second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item B is resolution proclaiming October 16th, 2021 as the 135th anniversary of the incorporation of South Omaha as a municipality within the state of Nebraska. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
This resolution recognizes the 135th anniversary of the founding of South Omaha as a city. It was dubbed the Magic City at that time because of its miraculous growth from zero population to tens of thousands of populations. Also encompassed over its lifetime the largest stockyards on earth. I'm happy to propose this because I was born and raised in South Omaha, and as a son of South Omaha, it gives me great pride to recognize the accomplishments of the, the people there. I know that we have a representative of the South Omaha Organization, Gary Kastrick, here, who will address us shortly. And he has led the historic recognition of South Omaha, both as a history professor at South High School, where he established the South Omaha Museum, and subsequently as the leader of a South Omaha Historical Initiative, which has resulted in a large number of ethnic murals throughout South Omaha that we in part funded through our visitor improvement grant process, recognizing the contribution of different ethnic groups to the community. I'm happy to say they include the Irish in South Omaha, that Commissioner Boyle's father and I helped inaugurate a couple of years ago. And on Saturday, the actual presentation of this proclamation occurred at El Alamo on South 24th Street, where a large number of South Omaha residents gathered. And Mr. Kastrick led them on a three-hour tour of historic sites in South Omaha, including the, the murals. And then the presentation was made to the collective group who had been led by the efforts of Mr. Kastrick and the mural people and the South Omaha Optimists. So it's with joy that I, I ask Mr. Kastrick to come down and, and receive this on behalf of the people of South Omaha. He's been instrumental in preserving the rich history of this portion of our community, which has served historically as the welcoming immigrant community of Omaha. My grandparents were immigrants to South Omaha, as were many, many, many families in our communities, parents and grandparents. It today serves the same purpose and is largely populated by first-generation, not only Omahans, but Americans, and has over the period of 135 years contributed greatly to the prosperity and wealth of our community through the hard work of these people who have come to share in the American dream. So if Mr. Kastrick would come down, I would like to ask him to receive this proclamation, and I would read it out so that the record will reflect that the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County today authorizes the following proclamation. Whereas we proclaim and recognize the date of October 16th, 2021 as the 135th anniversary of the incorporation of South Omaha as a municipality within the great state of Nebraska. And whereas South Omaha has heralded and christened, was heralded and christened with the sobriety of the Magic City for its remarkable growth in population, the most rapid of any city up to that time in American history. And whereas we also commemorate, commemorate South Omaha for the, the role it has played in the social, economic, and political prosperity of the city of Omaha since its annexation on June 20th, 1915. Within its boundaries was created the world's largest livestock center and a haven of our city's immigration and ethnic diversity, which has been continuous throughout those 135 years. And whereas furthermore, we attest to the conviction that South Omaha will continue to play a vibrant role in the progress and development of our city, state, and county, and country as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby proclaims October 16th, 2021 as 135th anniversary of South Omaha as a municipality within the great state of Nebraska. And Mr. Kastrick, I, I want to commend you for your long years of work on behalf of the people of South Omaha, both as an educator and as a historian. And note that most recently, you helped us put on the historical symposium in this room commemorating the 1919 riot and lynching that, that occurred here 100 years ago in 1919. Thank you, and I don't know if you've got anything to add relative to the South Omaha commemoration, but I know that you were instrumental in making it happen, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that, that South Omaha is being recognized. I think, I don't understand, I don't think people understand the role it played in the development of this city. You know, in its heyday, it was bringing in $1.5 million a day, that industry. And at one time, over 70% of the population was directly or indirectly working for that industry. I do tours of all of Omaha. In fact, I do haunted tours of Omaha. So if any of you are interested in getting scared, you can come to a haunted tour. But the key is that, the reason we are doing those ethnic murals down in South Omaha is because as people and as, as the area changes, a lot of people are saying, "Well, why would I come back down there since it's not the South Omaha I remember?" So I came up with the idea of having all of the different ethnic groups recognize their accomplishments, their people, what they did, their culture. And when we're done, our main goal is to bring people down to South Omaha to view these, to have festivals in front of them, with the final mural being the game of South Omaha. And that is, on the side of the building, we want to put the game. We want people to play on their phones as they go through the murals. And of course, at the end of that, if they pass the test, they can become unofficial SOBs or SOGs, South Omaha boys or South Omaha girls. And of course, since a lot of these murals are on the side of taverns, few people know that in 1957, South Omaha was in the Guinness Book of World Records, most taverns per capita of any place in the United States. 135 of them. You can imagine what type of work these people did, why they needed to basically have this kind of situation with how strenuous and hazardous that work is. And so what happens is, as you win the game, you also can get a ticket, for example, to go into your local pub and have a, a drink on being somebody from South Omaha. So Jim, thank you so much for doing this, for this proclamation. It's important and symbolic. This will sit with the Optimist Club in South Omaha, or maybe with the museum someday I hope to reestablish in South Omaha. So thank you.
Thank you, Gary. It gives me, as I indicated, great joy as a South Omaha boy, fellow South Omaha boy here today, to move the adoption of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing more comment, please vote.
Motion passes five to zero. And Mr. Kastrick, and we've been calling you by name, but would you please state your name for the record?
Gary Kastrick, K-A-S-T-R-I-C-K.
Thank you, Mr. Kastrick.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your efforts. With that, we'll go to item C, resolution congratulating and celebrating the 134th anniversary and renovation of Omaha's historic Mount Mariah Baptist Church. With that, I'll read this. I want to brace everybody. This is a two-page resolution. Whereas the Mount Mariah Baptist Church is located in North Omaha at 2606 North 24th Street. And whereas Mount Mariah, whose name means "prepared for God," was organized in 1887 and was the first Black Baptist church in Omaha. And whereas outreach to those in need has been second only to evangelism from Reverend Dr. Ralph Lassiter, Sr., who has continued the Mount Mariah tradition of evangelism and community service with the focus on serving the whole person without regard to race or current life challenges. And whereas throughout October 2021, Mount Mariah has been celebrating its 134th year of existence and a church renovation. And whereas significance of this anniversary is especially important as we look back 134 years ago at its birth during a time of racial bigotry and hatred in America. And whereas Mount Mariah was home to Mr. July Miles, the last African-American male to fight in the Civil War. And whereas through the years of social unrest, Mount Mariah continues to stand firm based on three critical elements of God's Word. God's Word says what is true, God's Word demands what is right, and God's Word provides what is good. And whereas recent history reflects continued progress of this effort and racial reconciliation as longstanding member of the National Baptist Convention, USA, Inc., the members of the Mount Mariah Baptist Church made a historic decision and voted to duly align with the Southern Baptist Convention through the Heartland Church Network. And whereas Pastor Reverend Ralph Lassiter was elected moderator from 2018 to 2020 and led the Heartland Church Network to 70 diverse Baptist churches pastored by Native American, Hispanic, white, Asian, African-American, and Sudanese pastors. And whereas history is made again by Mount Mariah when in January 2019, the Rising Sun Church Congregation, under the leadership of Reverend T. Michael Williams, formally merged with the Mount Mariah congregation. This was the first time in the history of Omaha where two African-American churches formally merged to better serve the community. And whereas currently, Mount Mariah operates Concord Square, a 21-unit housing complex for elderly and low-income citizens. In 2020, Mount Mariah helped establish the Two Mile Program as a residential program for drug and alcohol recovery. And whereas Mount Mariah also offers marriage and relationship education seminars, health screenings, and provides active children and youth programming and school partnerships. And whereas the five-year building renovation plan to better serve the Mount Mariah congregation and the Omaha community came to fruition in 2021. And in addition, the Mount Mariah Heritage Center was established and offers community gospel concerts, trainings, meeting space, and will house an ecumenical display of historic Nebraska churches. And whereas further during 2021, a nursery was established to serve growing families, and a new addition, an elevator was installed to better serve seniors in the congregation and in the community. And whereas in an effort to mitigate COVID-19 in Omaha, Mount Mariah's health ministry, led by Ms. Doris Lassiter, in collaboration with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, the Douglas County Health Department, Creighton University, University of Nebraska Medical Center, has distributed masks, thermometers, and trained over 50 faith-based community health ambassadors to provide COVID-19 prevention education to congregational members and the community. And whereas these milestones are deserving opportunities to be celebrated and commended, reflecting the success of Dr. and Mr. Ralph B. Lassiter and the entire congregation of Mount Mariah Baptist Church of Omaha. And for their vision transformed people everywhere by carrying out their mission to develop disciples of Jesus Christ who edify communities and glorify God, doing this through loving God and neighbor, being Christ-focused, Spirit-led, word-centered, passionate about prayer, committed to the lost, making disciples through transformational groups, and being committed to inspiring worship and community service with relevance and innovation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County that the Board hereby congratulates and recognizes Mount Mariah Baptist Church on the church's many achievements over 134 years in North Omaha, and expresses its gratitude to the congregation's commitment to improving our community and to the lives of others throughout its stewardship. I move to approve. Motion to second. I read that to get it approved today because Sunday, they will celebrate this formally by the ribbon cutting of the finishing of their facade. And I want to congratulate them and look forward to the event Sunday. With that, there's a motion to second. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
With that, we'll go on to item four, citizen's comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioner-related items not listed on today's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
Good morning. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. Continuing on civics. In case you haven't noticed, across this country, people are getting their backs up at the school boards. And with the National Association of School Boards and various local committees, local taxing bodies. Right here in River City, it's beginning to raise quite a stink at a lot of recent things. So I would like to point out today, one of those things is critical race theory and how it's being applied towards us to this day. And we'll start with some of the local newspapers. The Reader. Oh, well, here's a ultra-conservative magazine that talks about canceling culture right here in River City and the United States, where everything we were brought up, learning about and teaching about is being reversed now. And of course, they make the good guys the bad guys, the bad guys the good guys. An example of that, how they do this, is printed in a local newspaper called Noise. They say they are a local newspaper, news organization, a multimedia. Not very long ago, the Learning Community Council had a meeting. It was not supposed to be about CRT, but it was turned into CRT. And that community council governing body allowed that to happen. It was not on their agenda, but they let it be on the agenda. And they used it, and they printed about it in Noise. And there's a young man that comes here just about every week. They're not tired of him, but they're tired of me. He sits back there, or sometimes over here. He will not say that he's a community newspaper guy. Maybe he isn't currently today, but he certainly was. And he certainly acts like it when he goes back there to get interviews, or when somebody has been here as a presenter, leaves the room, he goes out there to get another interview with them. That's acting like a newspaper guy to me. But nobody calls him out for that, and I've asked him to do that. They don't force him to disclose that. Then he comes up, we all have to tell our address. He has multiple addresses in Omaha, and that was funny, funny to the city council, not you people. I don't think that was funny. But anyhow, my name come up in this community newspaper. But what those people were doing were not enforcing the Open Meetings Act. And the reason I bring that up again is because it is intended for everybody to have a uniform procedure to let the citizens of this country address their government. Too many local bodies think it's not necessarily that. They think because the National Association of School Boards, et cetera, et cetera, those higher-ups that know everything and quote best practices. We have people here in Omaha that use our tax dollars to go listen to those people. We have people here in Omaha that read what they send them and pattern their laws after what they send them. That's not civics, that's revolution. That's progressive Marxism. My name's mentioned in here, is old that guy that's very proud of his red Make America Great hat. But they didn't mention people wearing the Revolutionary Action Party shirts and raising their Marxist fists in the air. Some of them sat back here for quite a while, raising cane and with their shirts. They've gone into the word with lately, but they come out in the community newspapers. This has got to stop. They get their time in the press, but we don't.
It's time, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, anyone else's citizen comments? With that, we'll move on to item five, the weekly presentation and COVID nineteen update from Dr. Hughes. And Dr. Hughes, as you're walking up, without saying too much, the board wants to express our condolences to you and your family for your recent loss.
Good morning. All right. I continue to have good news for you this week, which makes me very happy. Couch also with the caveat that our hospitals continue to be pretty full, but we'll get there in a minute. Currently, we're sitting at a hundred and fifty-two point eight cases per hundred thousand for our seven-day total for COVID cases. This is much lower than we were even a month and a half ago. You can kind of look at that chart below and see, we did plateau out. You know, we decreased for a while, we plateaued out, and then continued to be on a decreasing trend. So that is good news. That seems to be continuing to follow the trends in other places that are a little bit ahead of us in this particular wave. And as always, we'll continue to watch that just to make sure that we're on top of any changes to that trend that might be happening. In terms of cases by age group, let's see if we can zoom that in just a little bit for you. So looking at the past four weeks or so, our cases in our pediatric and adolescent age groups really have been fairly stable. We did have a bit of a decrease, and then it kind of evened out essentially. That's been borne out as well in our district, school district data that we collect. Right now, the cases per thousand students is sitting at two point one. I believe last week I reported that at two point eight. So a bit of a decrease. It's been floating really in the twos for the past few weeks, so fairly stable there. We do continue to see some localized clusters and outbreaks in the schools that we are really responding to and addressing with the schools as we identify those and continuing to see decreasing rates throughout the other age groups. Looking at hospitalizations, as of last night, we were at seventy-nine percent capacity overall in the region for adult beds that are staffed. So overall, we've continued to see an increase in our hospitalizations, which I know has been something that we have continued to be concerned about. We've continued to talk about. I don't think we're out of the woods there yet. We do certainly continue to have some hospitals that don't have beds at all. So again, when we talk about this kind of overall hospitalization rate, that's taking all of our hospitals into account and basically averaging those out. We definitely still continue to see some of our hospitals that are struggling with having staffed beds. Our ICU right now, ICUs right now are at eighty-nine percent capacity. So we're definitely continuing to see higher acuity of cases, pretty high there. And then right now, we have twenty-five COVID patients on ventilators. So that number has stabilized and continues to be about where it has been. Our pediatric ICU is currently also at about eighty-nine percent. We continue to see cases of RSV and adenoviruses that are driving some of that. Four confirmed pediatric cases are COVID at this time. Of course, those change from day to day potentially. So keeping our eye on that, but we have a lot going on with our pediatric population and having beds available for them. In terms of where we are seeing cases right now in the community, see if we can get a good visual here. We'll go back one since that data's not complete yet. So you can see that our spread, if you will, within the community has basically been fairly stable. This map probably looks very similar to what you've seen in the past couple of weeks, so no surprises there. This is the week prior, so at the beginning of October, what we saw. So you can see that we continue to have higher cases kind of throughout the central and south areas in Omaha. Breakthrough cases continue to, we continue to identify more of those at a slow rate, so that's grown to one point three percent. Of course, that, we identify more of those as more people test. The death rate of those who have been vaccinated and gone on to develop COVID is at point zero one, so certainly still a very low rate there. However, we do know that statewide, that rate is higher. And again, it really is driven by how much testing is happening in a community and who is getting tested, whether those are a lot of unvaccinated or vaccinated people that are getting tested. So there's some of that that comes into play. But we do know that we are seeing some breakthrough infections. And of course, that has driven a lot of the booster conversation that's happening throughout the world right now. And I will talk about boosters here in just a moment as we've had some updates nationally in that realm. In terms of vaccination, so we had, starting late September, started to have a little bit of an increase in the number of people coming in for vaccine, which always makes us happy. We like to see people coming in and getting protected. Right there, you can see the slope actually got a little bit steeper there. For one dose, our eligible population is at seventy-four percent for at least one dose, which is great. Sixty-one point two percent of our total population has at least one dose. Our black population does continue to lag at forty point six percent. For fully vaccinated, sixty-nine point five percent of our eligible population. So we're really, really close right there to being at seventy. I would say by the end of the week, we should be there for that eligible population. And then fifty-seven point five for all of our residents. And again, our black population continues to lag there. Our adolescent population, which are our most recent to become eligible, really kind of mirror what we're seeing in our overall population. So sixty-three point nine percent have one dose and fifty-seven point six are fully vaccinated. And then to get a visual of where our fully vaccinated look like and where they live, there's the map. So we haven't seen a huge change here. We still, if you think back to the maps for weekly cases, continue to see a lot of our cases occurring kind of in that central and south areas of Omaha. And of course, that corridor from six eight one one six over to six eight one one zero tends to still be low, kind of a low vaccine area, so we're continuing to work on that. So some updates about vaccines. The FDA, as you are well aware, met last week to discuss boosters. So what came out of those discussions is that both Moderna and J&amp;J were recommended at that time for boosters. They're continuing to have conversations this week to make their formal recommendations that will go to the CDC. My understanding is that tomorrow, that should be happening. Then the CDC will make their, they and the ACIP will meet, and they will have their formal recommendation, and then that gets signed off by the CDC, and that makes it official. So along with that, my understanding is that they will also be discussing mixing of boosters. That's been a huge topic that a lot of people have been bringing up. So some of the research that we're seeing out there, of course, getting a booster with the same vaccine that you got initially does enhance your immunity, as it's supposed to with a booster. There is some research that shows that some types of mixing with boosters also can provide some pretty good immunity as well, in some cases, maybe even better immunity than using the same vaccine that you got initially. So that conversation also came up with the FDA. They cannot make a specific recommendation about which booster to give when, but they can give a recommendation that you can do general mixing of boosters. So essentially, we're expecting more information to come out on that this week as well. So a lot of people are very excited to see that information coming out. And we will keep, of course, all of you updated as well as we hear more on that. Locally, we're continuing to plan our rollout of vaccines, boosters, of course, as those become available and we are approved to do so. And then next week, we're expecting FDA to have their conversations about the pediatric vaccine. So we're very much looking forward to that. If you think back to that, our vaccination data, and we're talking so often about who's eligible, we're leaving out about a hundred thousand people of our population who are currently not eligible to get that vaccine, so that's under twelve years old. It's about, it's between ninety-eight thousand and a hundred thousand people. So that's a pretty significant chunk of the population that we really want to make sure that we get covered. So we're very much looking forward to that, that information coming out at the end of October. And we're planning for our rollouts there. A couple of other vaccination events that are coming up in the community. I believe that the Baptist Pastors Council is planning to hold a Vaccine Sunday where all of the pastors for the Baptist churches in North Omaha will be coordinating messages essentially to talk about the importance of vaccinations. So we're looking forward to that. And that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. And then this weekend in South Omaha, there is a Dia de los Muertos Vaccine Clinic that will be happening on Saturday at Plaza de la Raza, which is at Twenty-Fourth and N Street. That's a multi-collaborative effort. Mr. Ben Salazar coordinated that with UNMC, the Douglas County Health Department, and with One World Health Clinic. That will be going from eleven to probably around two or three. And we'll be offering vaccines for whoever wants to come and get one there. And I believe that the One World Health Clinic will actually be donating some gift certificates for adults who get their shot there. So I think they're planning to put out some more information about that in the next day or two. But there are some good efforts coming up by our partners coming over the next week or two that'll hopefully help boost our rates as well. And with that, I think I am ready for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Commissioner Cabral.
Thank you. Thanks for this. The positivity rate is what percentage point?
Let's take a look. We are at seven point seven today, which is about what we were last week.
I'm sorry, say again.
Seven point seven percent.
Seven point seven? And the deaths are at eight hundred and twenty-one. Where is that relative to last week?
That is up quite a few, actually. I want to say we got. I want to say we got... And I'm sorry, I didn't get that report this morning. I normally get that before I come in. I think we had 17 deaths last week that were reported. And it's not unusual for us to see our death reports come in kind of on a lag from case rates. So it's not totally unusual, but we did have quite a few. 83% of those were unvaccinated.
83% are unvaccinated?
Correct.
And there were seven, you said?
17.
17?
17.
Okay. That's quite a lot for one week.
It is. So over the past month or so, we've, it's been about between 13, 14 cases per week that we've gotten, or death certificates that we've gotten.
Regarding the racial disparity... And I looked this up a moment ago. So it appears that, you know, that's kind of ongoing. We've got a population that is 67.9% white, according to the graph, and that accounts for 61.6% of the cases, which is actually an under-representation in the overall population. But that's the only, it appears to be ethnic racial group that's underrepresented. All the others are higher than their percentage of the population. Is that right? It's kind of small, so it's hard to see there, but...
Let's pop it up so we can see it better. You are correct. Black is about even. So it's about even with their representation within the community. Hispanic is higher, and then white is lower. You're correct on that.
And this cases by age, the next part of this, I think it's the same graph or the same page of graphs, has a couple of different bar graphs. And one says cases by age group, and then one says cases by age group 2. Could you tell us what the difference is in those two graphs?
Yes. So really, the difference there is the age groups that you're looking at. So there are fewer age groups in the top. So it's just looking at them with a different breakdown. So the top one, you'll see a larger breakdown or a larger grouping for like your 0 to 19, or for your kids, it's a group of 0 to 19. If you look at cases by age group 2, you'll see a more granular breakdown. So you'll have 0 to 4, 5 to 9, and 10 to 14, 5 to 19. So if you want to have a more granular look at where those cases are occurring within that 0 to 19, you have that. So that's, it's just looking at the data in a slightly different way. And then, let's look at this. And so then, on this other graph, you'll also notice that the other age groups are also a little bit different. So you're looking at 20 to 34, 35 to 44, 45 to 54. And then, when you're looking at the age groups by 2, or the age group 2 graph, you're looking at those really by the decade age group. So 20 to 29, 30 to 39, 40 to 49. So it just groups things a little bit differently. And we get population data in a couple of different ways and broken down by different ways. And so it's really just giving you a couple of different ways to look at this data.
And we'll come back.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Boyle?
Just a couple things. The, as far as hospital capacity still being at 79% and ICU capacity 89%, I just know from working in the hospital system, it seems like there's a lot of issues with transfers. For example, rural hospitals being able to transfer into a facility who has the ability to handle these types of, the complexity of these types of cases. What are you hearing?
The exact same thing. So our rural hospitals are really tapped out right now. In fact, they're, I've heard stories recently from other health directors having conversations about, you know, things that are happening in their rural hospitals where they're having to take care of patients that are at an acuity level that they're not really prepared to handle because they're having a lot of trouble transferring to other higher, higher-level hospitals, essentially. So that's definitely something that we are hearing about.
Good, good. Yeah, I can see that's a really big deal. And sometimes I know they can actually have the ventilators, but just not have the staff that knows really how to handle an event.
Exactly.
So that can be a huge issue. The only other question I have really is, for those who are coming in now to be vaccinated for the first time, what's their motivation now? Like what finally pushed them over to get vaccinated? Are you hearing stories about that?
You know, a lot of it is just time. You know, they're finally feeling comfortable. They're finally seeing that people who've gotten the vaccine have fared well and are faring well. I think a lot of them are hearing the stories about who is being hospitalized and where the deaths are occurring. And that's predominantly in our unvaccinated population. Our deaths are, we do have occasional deaths that are occurring in vaccinated, but they tend to be those that would have immune systems that don't work well. So people are, I think, starting, some are starting to realize that this vaccine really, really is the best chance to stay out of the hospital, stay off a ventilator, and stay alive. So we're definitely hearing that. I think people are starting to, you know, with the holidays coming up, are starting to think about, you know, okay, well, maybe this is the time we need to make this happen so that maybe it's safer for us to be together with family who maybe isn't as well. So we're hearing some different things that are happening in the community. We still have some hesitancy out there, obviously. Otherwise, our numbers would be much higher than they are. We definitely have some work to do. We definitely want to continue to encourage people to get their vaccine, help them see that it's safe and it's working really well, and hopefully get this to a manageable level.
And then I said, that was my last question, but actually one more. How are the mobile clinics? What's the reception at this point with the mobile clinics?
You know, it's, sometimes we have a lot of people coming in. Other times, it's not as many. So it's kind of hit and miss. It just depends on where we are. You know, sometimes we'll have 30 or 40 people coming, and sometimes we'll have five or six. So it just really depends. We do have some more, I guess, stable vaccine areas set up now. So we have that, the drive-through up at the CHI Health Center now in Lot D, where people can just drive through and get their vaccine. So that's not a pop-up, that's just in place. I was not able to hear much about how that's going yet. So when I'm in later today, hopefully, I'll get to hear some more about how that's going. But I think as we have boosters being approved, and especially booster mixing, I think we're going to probably see more people coming in for these things.
All right, good. Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner?
Regarding the federal mandate, you know, you're referencing, we've heard that there is a federal vaccination mandate coming, is it December 8?
That sounds right.
For entities that receive federal funding. Could you tell us a little bit more about that?
You know, I wish that I could tell you more about it right now. I just don't have a lot of details with me right now. I need to, I need to read up on that right now. Our focus over the past week has really been watching for the boosters and watching what the FDA is going to do. But I'll be able to fill you in more on that next week.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Okay, see, no further questions after this. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. We'll go now to item A, and I'm assuming the budget report is as presented?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, we'll go to item G, the weekly personnel report from civil service, is as presented. No legislative issues that I am aware of, and I don't know of any items for executive session. None. All righty. With that...
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I just pick a note real quick. I got a message from somebody, just a small, small announcement. The contract and agenda request form had it listed correctly, but on the agenda for the item K, the amount was listed as 55,558. It should have been 55,668. So I know it's a small discrepancy, but the contract and agenda request form had the right amount. But the person who submitted it just wanted to make sure I made a note of that.
So again, for the record, the amount is?
55,668, which it was corrected on the contract.
Got it. All righty. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Moore, just a second. Second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Yes. Somewhere down there. Oh.
Motion passes 5 to 0.